Good evening. It's 7:04. We'll call the meeting to order. All members are present, with the exception of Selectman Shumpu. We'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants Twenty-two, Twenty-two A, Twenty-three, and Twenty-three A. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? And we'll move to the approval of the minutes of October twenty-two, two thousand twelve. Do we have a motion?
Motion except the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Our first appointment this evening is with Joseph M. Gleason, Verizon New England, Inc., and it's regarding a public hearing on request of Verizon New England, Inc., and Reading Municipal Light Department to place one pole on McDonald Road. Good evening, Mr. Gleason.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is Joseph Gleason. I am a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England, Inc. Our office is located at Twenty Shattuck Road in Andover. The petition before the board this evening is a request from both Verizon and Reading Municipal Light to place what's called a stub pole on McDonald Road at a location that, as shown on your plan, is approximately three hundred and ninety feet westerly of the McDonald Road-Tanner Road junction. If you're familiar with McDonald Road, it's sort of a circuitous route out there, and it kind of curves and winds its way through that area. And what Verizon and RMLD are looking to do is place a stub pole basically at that jog in the road where McDonald Road moves from a westerly direction to a northerly direction, if you're actually coming from Tanner Road. My engineer advises me that there's an existing pole at the corner there on the northerly side of McDonald Road. It's designated as Pole Two-One-Three-Over-Nine. What my engineer advises me is, is that that particular pole, and there may be other poles in that neighborhood, that are scheduled for an upgrade. And what our engineer discovered was that, or is that, Pole Two-One-Three-Nine is actually being guyed to a tree across the street. Now, what I tell all of my, what I say in all of my appearances before all the boards and council, city council, I appear in front of them, is that Verizon is actively looking to do away with tree guys. For those who don't know what a tree guy is, it's just basically a support wire that runs from a pole and is then run across a street and anchored into a living tree. And a lot of these tree guys were done back in the day. Some of them go back decades. A lot of them were done with a nod and a wink, or just somebody saying, hey, look, we've got to guy this, so they just string a wire across and anchor it into a tree. They're probably there without appropriate rights, or easements, or what have you, depending on where that tree is located. So Verizon is actively pursuing the elimination of tree guys throughout its serving area, and we're slowly but surely getting there. In this particular case, the engineer wants to upgrade Pole Two-One-Three-Over-Nine, and she does not want to keep the tree guy. So we're asking for permission to install one additional, one stub pole on the southerly side. Just so you'll know, stub poles are only a supporting feature. What they do is, the pole will be somewhat undersized. It won't be the same size as the other poles in the area. And they run about twenty-five to thirty feet in height, and all they'll do is carry the anchor and the guy itself. So there won't be any wires placed on it. There won't be any transformers placed on it. It's just a supporting feature. Now, can I tell you that universally, without question, forever and a day, that no utility will ever put anything on that pole? I cannot say that. But ninety-nine times out of a hundred, stub pole will only serve to carry the guy wire and anchor. And that, Mr. Chairman, is basically the sum and substance of my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any reason why, as a matter of course, you wouldn't install a regular pole at Two-Thirteen Over Nine South and then just remove the existing? Is it just a question of money? Is it a question of service and infrastructure down there?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay. My understanding is that the existing location, based on both your explanation and the plan that you gave us, is that Pole Number Two-Thirteen Over Nine
Yes.
is going to be an existing pole that will remain there.
Correct.
And the stub pole that you're putting in is really for support in lieu of the tree, which doesn't make any sense.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is there a reason why you don't eliminate the existing pole and install a double pole wherever that doesn't need that stub pole as an additional?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, the, yes, the issue at that location is one more physics than anything else. The pole line that services McDonald Road is, it runs along basically the northerly side of that road. And what happens is, or what would happen is, that without some sort of counterbalancing structure where the road turns, that pole line would then begin to list. There would be a pull on that pole, and what would happen is, that pole would begin, the Twenty-two-on-three-over-nine would then be able, would start falling, for lack of a better term, backwards, sort of back onto the abutting property there, because it's being pulled in a direction that's not being counterbalanced to the southerly side. So what Verizon does, and what RMLD does, and what all utilities do is, as a matter of course, they try and counterbalance that pull. So what they, what happened was, apparently when the line was originally installed, whether it be an engineer or construction foreman, he noted that because of that turn in the road, you're going to need some sort of counterbalancing feature. So they ran that guy across the street from the existing pole into the tree. So what we'll do is, or what we do to alleviate this, the tree guy, is we place the stub pole, and the, hopefully the attractive feature of the pole, if there can be any attractive feature to a pole, is that it's generally a bit undersized and doesn't carry any facilities. So I hope I'm answering your question correctly. There is a, there is an engineering need to have some sort of counterbalance at that locus to alleviate a pull on the pole, because then what will happen is, without, without counterbalancing facility, eventually you'll see that pole begin to tilt, and then it will, it could eventually fall. So that's why we have it.
And I think I get that. So that I make sure I'm understanding it correctly. You couldn't simply replace that pole, given the system of transmission lines in that area?
Yeah.
You need the pole where it is with the counterbalancing. You can't just make a, you can't swap out that pole without, without making changes to the whole transmission system.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see. That's a good question. That can sometimes be done. I'm not entirely sure if that could be done at this location. I understand what you're saying. You could say, well, maybe if you sort of reconfigured the poles and what have you at that location, you might be able to alleviate the need for the stub. I'm not aware of any reconfiguration of the existing pole line. I think what the engineer is doing is basically looking at those poles. And I did look at some of the poles that are out there. They're looking a little leggy, you know, they're looking a little aged, and I think what they want to do is put some bigger poles and some stronger poles out there. Now, in some circumstances, what can happen is, when there's an upgrade to be done, the engineer can look at a certain location and say, okay, you know what? This is an opportunity for us to kind of straighten things out, as it were. We can move these, we can upsize poles, and what we can do is, we might be able to, you know, within the taking and what have you, adjust the location, straighten out the lines and what have you. This particular location, unfortunately, because of that jog in the road, it is going to require counterbalancing. I would also suggest to the chair respectfully that there is a home located at that particular location, right on the northerly side of Tanner Road, and if we move that pole back from its present location somewhere, you know, in an easterly direction, you would begin to, I would suggest, impact the premises at that corner. Relative to any significant upgrades and readjustment of the poles, I really couldn't answer that. I'd have to run that by our engineer, but I don't believe that's part and parcel of what's going on out there.
Okay. Certainly want to go to the board, but on some of these applications found, it makes sense to go to the audience first. Are any abutters here that have any specific concerns about this? Any other questions or concerns about this? Mr. McDonald, if you could, in the future, not walk in the door behind us. It's terribly rude. If you could use the door, everybody else does. Thank you. Do you have a question or comment about this?
Yes, I, can you describe to the audience a little bit more where Tanner Road is?
Okay. I'm not intimate with the streets of Wilmington. Both my engineering plan and a Google Maps search indicates that as McDonald Road comes up from Salem Street, it then turns easterly, but the road actually continues in a northerly direction, and then it dead-ends. My engineer indicates that the portion of that road north of the McDonald Road Kern is designated as Tanner Road. I have that on the engineering plan, and I said, like I said, I did a Google Maps search and identified the same location as being Tanner Road. Whether or not that's an actual accepted street in the town of Wilmington, I don't know. I didn't research that. But again, that portion of McDonald Road is not really a tenet to this particular petition, because our work is three hundred and ninety feet westerly of that particular intersection.
Okay. I guess the reason for the question is, if in the future Tanner Road is a paper street or has future development, would it be wise to set this up so that there wouldn't be a problem, such as somebody required, being required to go with underground utilities or that sort of thing?
Let me jump in there. Tanner Road was constructed in the last ten to fifteen years through the planning board. I assume some division control, but if not, then under eighty-one G. So that portion of Tanner Road is, in fact, constructed, and it is what it is. And the pole that we're, that we're looking at here is some three hundred and ninety feet or so from the intersection with Tanner Road.
Does that, I'm sorry. Okay.
Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the request of Verizon New England and Reading Municipal Light to place the one pole on McDonald Road.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Mr. Gleason a question while he's here?
Sure.
Couple of years ago, you were here, we were talking about double poles.
Yes.
Do we ever get some kind of a report on that?
You know, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I was getting out of my car today, and I had one of those V-eight moments, you know? You hit your head and it said, oh, I didn't pull a double pole inventory. What I will do is, I will have an updated double pole inventory to Mr. Hall's office first thing in the morning. I'll have the clerk at the Verizon offices pull it and have it emailed to the office. I will just say this. Relative to the double pole inventory, and forgive me if I'm repeating myself from a couple of years ago, right now, the double pole database is not maintained by Verizon. It's done by a third-party contractor. So what happens is, is that I will ask the clerk at Verizon, the Verizon Right-of-Way Office tomorrow to pull this report for you. You will get a report that will give you some indication of your double pole count here in town, the accuracy of which I cannot attest to. It will be a general overview, may not be an up-to-date, accurate account, but it will give you sort of an idea of where your hotspots are, and if there's any issues or concerns of any members of the board, I believe that our number for the right-of-way department is on record here. Please feel free to give Mr. Gracia, the right-of-way manager, a call, and we'll address any particular issues of concern to the board.
Okay, thank you. I just had some questions brought to my attention. Some of the poles that look pretty bad, like they're broken, and then are supported by a double pole?
Do you have locations I can certainly?
Off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I'll send, we'll send the email tomorrow, and if you want to respond, once we get the double pole inventory, you can either respond to me, I think she has my email information, or you can get to Mr. Gracia directly, and we'll definitely take a look at what the problem is.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our seven-ten appointment is with George Rosopolis, President of Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, Inc. It's regarding a request to obtain a common victual license for property located at Three-R Church Street, Units One and Two. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Did I pronounce your name correctly? That's the first.
Rosopolis, yeah.
Rosopolis, okay. Mr. Rosopolis, what can we do for you?
Just appeared before you tonight on a common vix license for Three Church Street, to do business as Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza.
Brief and to the point, not the matter with that. Does anybody else up at the board here have any questions?
Any, any department heads, what do you put in this?
I have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, recommends approval of the common victual license for Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, Inc., located at Units One and Two, Three-R Church Street, subject to meeting all requirements of the Board of Health. Also, the building inspector, Al Spalding, indicates this is an allowed use in the central business zone, so there are no zoning issues.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would just have, everything looks in order here in terms of the approval. Can you just tell us a little bit about your business, what you intend to serve and sell, and what you're, how is, what you intend in that regard, and when you think you might be open, just to inform the public?
Sure. I have two other locations, one in PBD, one in Benning Square, Swamp Scottsdale. Basically, we serve pizza, calzones, hot subs, cold subs, roast beef sandwiches, all types of sides, pastas, dinners, delivery, Monday through Thursday, eleven to ten, weekends, possibly eleven to eleven. It's basically all it consists of.
Okay.
Seating for about twenty-four, thirty people.
Great.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the common victuals license, properly located at Three-R Church Street, to Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Our seven-twenty appointment is with Jose B. Bertolucci, Royal S Corp., DBA Subway, and it's a request to obtain a common victual license for property located at Two-Eighty-Five-B Main Street.
How are you?
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. If you could, tell us a little bit about what brings you here and what we can do for you.
My name is Jose Bertolucci, and I'm just taking over the subway Two-Eighty-Five Main Street, and I'm just basically applying for the license. The business has been there for eight, seven years now. It's just a change of ownership.
Okay, so those Main Street addresses can be confusing sometimes.
Two-Eighty-Five-B, if you want to be more specific.
Right, same one where it's existed.
Right, yeah, it's just changing of ownership and renewing the license.
Great. Questions or comments from the board?
We have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse. I recommend approval of the common victuals license for Royal S Corp., DBA Subway, located at Two-Eighty-Five-B Main Street, subject to meeting all the requirements of the Board of Health. Al Spalding, Building Inspector, this is an allowed use in the general business zone. There are no zoning issues.
Okay, that, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the victuals license for the property located at Two-Eighty-Five-B Main Streets for a subway.
Second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Our next appointment is with Robert DePisa, Fakasha, Inc., doing business as Fakasha's Restaurant. It's regarding a request to obtain a common victuals license for property located at Two Lowell Street. I'd also note that the next agenda item is with the same party in interest, and that's regarding a request to obtain an entertainment license for property located at the same premises to Lowell Street. So certainly, we can take whatever information you have on both of those applications.
Okay, how are you doing? Good evening.
Good evening to you.
I have been the owner of record for eleven years at that location. Last year, we came in front of the board to transfer license of ownership to Disney Oliveira. At that time, you folks approved everything, with one piece that the state of Massachusetts did not transfer the liquor license. They held it up through an extensive audit that we had through the Mass Department of Revenue. We had hoped to have it resolved. You folks have done your diligence, and you approved the licensing on the common victual license, the entertainment license, and all those licenses transferred to Oliveira back at that time that we requested. The state of Massachusetts, still twelve months later almost, we still haven't gotten anywhere. We're in the middle of a big appeal. We have a tax attorney, we have an accountant, the, our town, our attorney has been in touch with town council, gave them all the documentation, what's going on. So technically, we cannot transfer the liquor license until we resolve that. So therefore, we're coming back in front of you to get the common victual license, the entertainment license, back in the rightful name of Fakasha, Inc., rather than having one business with different licensing.
And with respect to the all-alcohol license, I know that we have all our renewals in this package here. So the renewal for that alcohol license is intended to be Fakasha's?
Yes, and it's never changed.
Okay.
And that's kind of why, on the town level, you guys were very fast and took care of it. On the state level, not so easy.
Okay.
And that's kind of why we're back here.
Okay. And my understanding, both from information that the manager has provided, and also based on your comments tonight, the difficulties that you're having in getting the transfer approved through the ABCC, sounds as though it is driven by questions regarding taxes, not regarding serving practices, not regarding...
Not at all, not at all. In all of our taxes, all our meals taxes, everything, they've never stopped being paid. They've always, everything is being done on time, everything is, we just have a discrepancy about an amount that's owed.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
I get no questions. I'd be happy to make a motion to grant the request.
Okay. Entertainer motion? All right. The, let's take them up in order. Let's take up the common victuals license first. We'll accept that as the motion that's been seconded. Anything further on that?
No.
All in favor? That's unanimous? Do we have a motion regarding the entertainment license?
I'd make a motion that we grant the entertainment license.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor? That's unanimous. And Mr. DePisa, while you're, while you're here, I know that we take up the alcohol license renewals later in the agenda, and we, you know, we take them up as a matter of course, without the parties in interest being present. Because of this, I just wanted to make sure that the board is being fair and upfront with you. When we take up that vote, if the board is inclined to renew the license under Fakasha, Inc., we'll need to make sure that the manager of record is accurately reflected.
Correct.
If, if there's any change to that, and I understand that Mr. Oliveira, as the potential transferee when that comes around, if he's going to maintain the presence as the onsite manager, then immediately at the turn of the new year, you should file a change of manager form.
Right now, I'm still in that building thirty hours.
Okay, and you're responsible for it?
Absolutely.
And we understand all that.
Yes.
Figured while you were here, it made sense to
I do appreciate that.
to make sure you knew that, because I know that the manager's going to be on top of that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, we will move to our next agenda item with Kenneth Gordon, Representative-Elect, Precinct Three, and he's here as an introduction to the residents of Wilmington as our, as the newest member of our legislative delegation. Good evening, Mr. Gordon, and it's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you very much.
To introduce you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newhouse. And as you said, I am delighted to introduce myself as our new state legislator for Precinct Three. I take office on January second. I'm excited to get to work for Wilmington, and as well as Burlington and Bedford, the district that I represent, to help Jim Moselli, who has the rest of Wilmington. The, I got into the race late, just before the primary, and it was a brief amount of time in the general election as well. So I hadn't had a chance to meet you folks formally, but now that we're into the legislative part of what I intend to do for our community, I want to make sure you know that I'm available to you. I have, I still have my website up from the campaign, if you'd need me now, but in two weeks, you'll be able to find me through the state legislative website. I'll have my number there. Rob Peterson is my legislative aide that we've hired. He lives here in Wilmington, and he'll be available to you as well. And again, I'm really excited to get to work. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be in your way, but on the other hand, I want to be here for you, and I'd like to know that, I will be contacting you for information from time to time, as I get, reach out for the support I need to do my job for Wilmington as well.
Appreciate that. Both you taking the time to be here and the message that you just articulated. Do we have any questions or comments from up here?
I'll just make a quick comment. Congratulations on your election. I did follow it, and you won. You didn't get any big support from any of the other big politicians, and you did it. And I take my hat off to you, and you came in late, so obviously, you had a good message out there, and people voted for you. I don't live in Precinct Three. I mean, I own a business in Precinct Three, and I've lived in it as a young kid in Precinct Three, but, you know, congratulations.
I appreciate it. One of the best things about running for this office were the number of people I met in all three communities, and it's been very rewarding and a great experience in that way. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I echo that. Congratulations on your victory. I've met you on a few occasions now, and I really appreciate your accessibility, what you're showing here, even for one precinct of Wilmington, and I've seen you, seen you around a lot already, so I appreciate it, and good luck in the future.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Just want to say congratulations, and it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working together.
Thank you, same here, thank you.
Very well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
At that, we can move to communications. Mr. Hall.
First item on the communications agenda, a memorandum to the board regarding the public health nurse. I regret to report that Tina Scanlon has given her notice, her intention to resign from the position of public health nurse. She's been an integral part of the health department, providing health checks to elders at the senior center, has been a key participant in conducting the annual flu clinic. As public health nurse, she serves as a principal point of contact for residents seeking to access the area's social services network. Her positive attitude and friendly demeanor has suited her well for the regular interactions she has had with families in Wilmington. She has accepted a position in the healthcare field and will leave employment with the town effective January eleventh, two thousand thirteen. I commend her contributions to the town of Wilmington and wish her well with her future endeavors. It's a memorandum to the board regarding the Yentel Farm Development Survey. The Yentel Farm Development Committee is committed to gathering a broad range of community input regarding the new recreational area being planned for the former Yentel Farm property. To maximize the opportunity for community input, the Yentel Farm Development Committee has created a survey available online or in paper form at various locations. The survey serves, seeks to, seeks information about the public interest, concerns, and thoughts on the types of activities that should be considered in the development of the property. The survey is only eight questions and takes less than five minutes to complete. A link to the survey is on the town's webpage, and will be available through a link on the Wilmington Memorial Library and Wilmington Public School websites. Paper forms of the survey are available at the town hall and the public library. School department is also working on a plan to gather input and ideas from elementary school-age children. The survey will run through January thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Residents are strongly encouraged to participate. Results will be presented to the Yentel Farm Committee at its meeting in February. Feedback gathered from the survey will assist the committee to develop recommendations for the use of valuable open space.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just make a quick comment. I'm really happy to see the array of possibilities in here. Just one small point I like to make reference. Some people have approached me over a period of time, they would like to see something related to a section put off, some type of small dog park. I've heard that frequently. I just thought I'd share that with the board. Obviously, I know it's in infancy in this, and I just thought I'd share that with the board. That's all. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have correspondence from the MMA, Mass Municipal Association, just with respect to proposed budget cuts that Governor Patrick announced. These are mid-year budget cuts. Governor cites $540 million state budget shortfall in fiscal thirteen. Governor cites $540 million state budget shortfall in fiscal '13. Just in brief, he notes, it's noted here, early this afternoon, Governor Deval Patrick announced that the state is facing a $540 million shortfall in its fiscal year 2013 budget and has unveiled a plan to close the budget gap this year. He announced he is using his 9C emergency budget power to implement $225 million in immediate cuts to state-funded programs and the executive agencies under his control, and he has proposed legislation to expand his 9C authority so that he can cut 9 million or 1% from unrestricted general government aid, as well as 1% cuts to the judiciary, constitutional offices, and the legislature. His plans would also withdraw 200 million from the state's rainy day fund. Correspondence goes on to specify the categories of aid that would be impacted.
I assume you'll be taking all this into account with your budget presentation next month?
We have a correspondence from the, regarding, from the MWRA Advisory Board. This is with respect to Governor's cut in debt service assistance for fiscal '13. This is a note from the Advisory Board indicating that the governor has announced, again, the $540 million mid-year budget gap. Unfortunately, the line item for the Commonwealth Sewer Rate Relief Fund, which is also known as a debt service assistance, has been eliminated. The MWRA and the Advisory Board staff will continue to advocate for funding in January when the 2013 and '14 legislative session begins. Just by way of note, if the budget cut that the governor was making here, the MWRA is going to absorb the cut that would affect MWRA members. We have correspondence from Paula McShane Lambert, Treasurer of the Shoshine School, Shoshine Regional Voc School. This correspondence references the MSBA funding. At the school committee meeting held on November 26, 2012, the Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee voted to amend the fiscal year 2013 budget by an additional $1,304.29 to replace the boiler at the Shoshine Valley Technical High School. Funds for this project will be paid through the excess and deficiencies account, offset by anticipated receipt of 52% reimbursement from a grant from the Mass School Building Authority. As stipulated in the attached letter of November 14, 2012, we are thrilled with the news and are delighted to share it with you. Consistent with the information shared with the district administrators on January 18, 2012, we have sufficient reserves to absorb the cost for this project. As stipulated in state law, since there is no financial impact on the assessment paid by our member communities, there is no need to call a special town meeting to ratify the action taken by the Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee. If you are opposed to the amendment, you may call a special town meeting within 45 days of the regional school committee vote to approve or reject the budget amendment. If you have any questions regarding the aforementioned, please call Superintendent Director Charles And then, follow-up to that is correspondence from the MSBA outlining the funding. I'm pleased to report the Board of Massachusetts School Building Authority voted to approve the proposed accelerated repair project for the Shoshine Valley Regional Vocational School District to replace the boiler at the Shoshine Valley Vocational Technical High School. The Board approved an estimated maximum total facility grant of $497,510, which does not include any funds for potential eligible owners or construction contingency expenditures. In the event the MSBA determines that any owner or construction contingent expenditures are eligible for reimbursement, the maximum construction contingency expenditures, I'm sorry, the total facilities grant and proposed project may increase to $520,039. Final grant amount will be determined by the MSBA based upon the review and audit of all project costs incurred by the district in accordance with the MSBA Regulations Policy and Guidelines Project Funding Agreement. The final grant amount may be an amount less than $497,510. And they go on to describe the process that the district must follow. And then, we have the board to consider.
We have, next on our agenda, a board to consider the request of Dana Burnham, President of the Wilmington Farmers Market Association, to conduct the farmers market on Sundays, June 16, 2013, through September 30, 2013, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Excuse me. This specifically would exclude the Sunday during the Fourth of July festivities. So as the board will recall, Ms. Burnham attended a recent meeting, I believe, last one, or the one before, with a, an indication that she would be back with specific dates and times. If anybody has any questions or comments about this proposed calendar, certainly speak up, and otherwise, would entertain a motion.
Other than the Fourth of July, there was no other conflict, correct?
That's right.
I'll make the motion that we grant the request that the farmers market does, could go on the days as noted here.
Second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Next on the agenda is the board to consider the approval of the 2013 licenses for alcoholic beverages, automatic amusement device, class-one garage, class-two garage, entertainment, and common victuals licenses. If we could have the manager take these up by subject matter, we'll take votes, and then we'll stay behind the meeting and sign as necessary.
First, under consideration for the alcohol license renewals, we have two club licenses, one to the Aleppo Temple Fordham Associates, Inc., 99 Fordham Road, the second being the Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Ave. And those, there's a recommendation from the police chief. Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the applications for renewal of the respective alcohol licenses listed below. Each year, the department also conducts random compliance checks and notifies the board of selectmen as well as a licensee of any non-compliance issues. As of the last compliance check on each respective license type, all applicants for renewal are currently in compliance. Therefore, the department recommends renewal of the following alcohol licenses, and these two are included.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to grant the license?
I have a motion to grant the license to the Aleppo Temple and Knights of Columbus Building Association. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous?
The next category of alcohol licenses are package stores. We have Everich LLC, DBA Colonial Park Liquors, 35 Lowell Street, Unit 9. Eastgate Liquor Store, 211 Lowell Street. Mystic Liquors, Inc., DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits, 258 Main Street. Shoprite Liquors, Inc., 381 Middlesex Avenue. Robert P. McKeon Jr., DBA Main Street Liquors, 335 Main Street, Unit 1. Those are all package store licenses.
And I presume, Mr. Hall, that the Main Street Liquors one is because the state wouldn't have had a chance to take action on the transfer we authorized, right?
That's right.
Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion on those five applicants?
I'd make a motion that we grant the applicants the licenses.
Second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Next, we have the all alcohol licenses. These are for restaurants. First, Focaccia, Inc., DBA Focaccia Restaurant, 2 Lowell Street. Michael's Place, Inc., 110 Lowell Street. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 217 Lowell Street. Rocco's Restaurant, Inc., 193 Main Street. 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant &amp; Pub, 144 Lowell Street. A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. And Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill &amp; Bar, 207 Main Street.
We have a motion on that. Yeah, I wonder if we could take up, well, let's see, if we have a motion and a second, then maybe we can just have one abstention on the vote.
Okay. Do we want to do them all at once?
Yeah, do them all at once, and we'll...
Okay. I'd make a motion to grant all these, the liquor licenses read by the town manager.
I'll second that.
Okay. Made and seconded? All in favor?
Be all in favor and abstain for my Michael's Place.
Okay. If you could, let the record reflect, the vote is unanimous, and with respect to Michael's Place, Inc., it's unanimous, 3 to 0, with Mr. McCoy abstaining.
All right, next, we have the application for automatic amusement license. This is requested by Yusuf McGaly, McGaly, Inc., DBA Santa Maria Pizza. The recommendation from the police chief, upon completing an investigation, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2013 license application to operate three automatic amusement devices at Gablea, Inc., DBA Santa Maria Pizza, located at 362 Middlesex Ave, Wilmington. Included are the executed license renewals.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the license for the automatic amusement devices.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Application for class-one license renewal. This is for William D. Semenio, DBA Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi.
Yes, please. And are the recommendations made separately?
Actually, yeah, there, let me just go through each of the ones in this category. For the garage licenses, the class-one garage licenses, we have Bill Dubey Hyundai, Dubey Auto Group, Inc., 271 Main Street, and again, as mentioned, Cornerstone Automotive, 580 Main Street. Recommendation, again, from the police chief, upon review, the police department recommends renewal of the following class-one and class-two garage license renewal applications for 2013, Bill Dubey Hyundai and Cornerstone Automotive. The only recommendation that I would add to that is that the board consider approving the Cornerstone license and that the license be retained pending payment of 2012 outstanding taxes.
So it appears as though we have positive recommendations for all of the class-one and class-two that appear on the list. Let's take up the class-one recommendation relative to Cornerstone. Do we have a motion regarding Bill Dubey Hyundai at 271 Main Street?
I'd make a motion to grant the request.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous? And would entertain a motion for the class-one garage license for Cornerstone Automotive at 580 Main Street.
I'll make that motion. Does it be held back until the taxes are paid?
Okay.
Second.
All right, so the motion has been made to, and seconded, to issue the license and to direct the manager to withhold the license until payment of the 2012 taxes. All those in favor? It's unanimous? And perhaps we can take up the class-two garage licenses as one group, as it appears that the recommendations are the same for all.
That's right. So under the class-two garage licenses, we have Advanced Automotive Wilmington Shell, Inc., 779 Woburn Street. Charlie's Auto Sales LLC, 611 Main Street. Heavy Equipment Connection, Inc., 239 Andover Street. Imperial Auto LLC, 845 Woburn Street. J&amp;E Service Corp., 619 Rear Main Street. NEA Inc., DBA Z&amp;S Gas &amp; Service, 603 Main Street. Route 16 Auto Broker, Adamo, Ruffo, and Michael Sciara, DBA 600 Main Street. I would just add, the building inspector also provided his recommendation that they're, each of these establishments is in compliance with zoning, and there are no outstanding zoning issues.
Do we have a motion regarding the class-two garage licensees applications?
I move to grant the class-two garage licenses as read by the manager for the following companies indicated.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Next, we have entertainment licenses.
Okay, so we have two that were in the memorandum, but I presume and understand that Olivera Enterprises has withdrawn its applications, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're dealing with Rocco's Restaurant, Inc., at 193 Main Street.
Yes.
Recommendations?
We have a recommendation. This is from the police chief. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2013 entertainment license applications to Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street, Wilmington, Mass.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
The final category is the common victular licenses. The following establishments have applied for common victular licenses. 99 Restaurant of Boston, 99 Restaurant &amp; Pub. AJ's Kitchen, 162 Lowell Street. As Good As It Gets, 35 Lowell Street. Big Joe's Enterprises, 433 Main Street. Brothers Roast Beef &amp; Pizza, 331 Main Street. Burger King Restaurant, 280 Lowell Street. China Whack, 329 Main Street. Country Chef Restaurant, 139 Main Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 211 Lowell Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 195 Main Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 66 S Concord Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 357 Middlesex Avenue. Dunkin' Donuts, 329 Main Street. The initial, initially, Olivera Enterprises had filed, but they've since withdrawn. Fordham Road Associates, Inc., 99 Fordham Road. Golden Ginger Restaurant, 225 Main Street. Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street. Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, 35 Lowell Street. Knights of Columbus, 112 Middlesex Ave. McDonald's Restaurant, 212 Main Street. Michael's Place, 110 Lowell Street. Pacific Grove, 211 E, aka 217 Lowell Street. Panera Bread, 228 Main Street. Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili Grill &amp; Bar, 207 Main Street. Peter's Pizza &amp; Roast Beef, 2 Lowell Street. Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. The Sandwich Exchange, 16 Upton Drive. The Sandwich Exchange Express, 66 Z Concord Street. Samardz Super Beef, 279... Samard's Super Beef, 279 Main Street, Sonic Drive-In, 220 Main Street, Starbucks Coffee, 253 Main Street, Carmella Shop and Go, 3 Jefferson Road, Monhender K. Alawala Subway, actually, that was the one that we just dealt with because there was a change in ownership, so... Sunnyside Cafe, 2 Jefferson Road, The Corner Store, 296 Shoshine Avenue, and Wilmington House of Pizza, 325 Main Street.
I may have missed it when you were going through the corporate names as opposed to some of the business names. Was the Carmella Stop and Go just mentioned on that list?
Yes, yeah.
It was, okay. And the Chili's was also mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on that?
Just have a question for the record, if I may, is that in the memo that I'm reading here, this one was sent to the Board of Health for Dunkin' Donuts. It lists 359 Middlesex Ave. The manager enlisting the names of the businesses indicated 357, and the application indicates 357. So just want to make sure, this is a point of clarification, that it is in fact 357 Middlesex Avenue as opposed to 359.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll let the record reflect that we believe it's 357, and in any event, it's the one that's operated by Han and Donuts LLC.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. McDonald.
I believe the Knights of Columbus was mentioned?
It was.
And I guess the question is, it appears that the sons of Italy, from time to time, uses the Knights of Columbus building, and would they need to get a common victuals license?
I don't believe so. I believe that the establishment that hosts various functions, that different groups might rent it out, for example, a wedding might rent out that hall, so it's the victuals license for that kitchen that covers it. The other questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we grant the victuals license as read by the town manager.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous? And so they are all unanimous, all with a vote of four to zero, with the exception of Michael's Place Inc., is a vote of three to zero with Mr. McCoy abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for licenses, right?
Yes.
Didn't miss any. Okay, public comment? Yes, Ms. McDonald.
I have several questions, but I'd like the manager to clarify something for the town before I ask those questions. Mr. Hall, you mentioned that the governor is making cuts, and one of the items that you mentioned was that cuts relative to the MWRA districts are being absorbed by the MWRA. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
There's one particular category of funding for sewer upgrades. There's grant money that is made available, and that particular piece is being dealt with within the MWRA.
If I can get a clarification, if the MWRA is absorbing that, will they pass that on to the ratepayers? Or do they have a free cash fund, a rate day fund? Can you tell us anything about that?
I'm not sure specifically how they're absorbing it, that would be a question that they could better address.
The reason why I ask is usually they pass costs on to ratepayers, so if maybe you could, at the next meeting, clarify that for the public, it would be helpful.
They're taking a cut that... in funding from the state, and they are dealing with it within their budget, so I would expect there wouldn't be an effect on the ratepayers since they're working within their existing budget.
Well, if they're working within their existing budget, and their existing budget hasn't had to absorb that, it might be a wise move to find out if that is going to be passed on to the ratepayers. I think it would accomplish simply by having a discussion with the MWRA and getting clarification on that.
Yeah, certainly, as the manager formulates his budget, the local receipts are certainly part of that. So we'll make sure that we're fully aware and informed as to what to expect from MWRA.
Questions ahead, relative to the Shoshine Tech Boiler Replacement. Can you tell us if the replacement bids will be put out on the central register for the state of Massachusetts?
Yeah, I'd refer you to the Shoshine School Superintendent for any specific information that you want regarding that project. The limited scope in which the town is involved is receiving notice that they are incurring this cost, and because they... between the state's MSBA funds and the positive cash reserves that the school maintains, that it doesn't have any net effect on the town of Wilmington's assessment. So I'd refer you to the school superintendent in Shoshine.
I appreciate that. I'm not so sure that I agree with you. I know that the town spends millions of dollars for the Shoshine Tech education. This is a project that was stated is going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for boiler replacement. And to be perfectly honest with you, I don't think it should be the residents' responsibility to communicate with the Shoshine Tech Superintendent. I think our town officials would best communicate that, since it is a large amount of money. And, you know, I think having that information for the next meeting would, you know, be prudent.
Well, Ms. McDonald, you can disagree with me all you want. What I'm telling you is that from the standpoint of what this board does, they're notifying us that they're going to invest in their infrastructure, that they're going to do it at 52 cents on the dollar being provided by the state, and with the balance of that, they're going to do it with their cash reserves. That makes sense in terms of energy costs, it makes sense in terms of the quality of the education that's offered in that school. And you didn't ask about our position relative to the project. What you asked me was what they intended to do by way of bid documents. Frankly, as a member of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, I understand just how heavily governed they are, both by state law and by the parameters of MSBA, that just to satisfy you, I'm not going to go running around and get that information for you. I'm referring you to the Shoshine Tech Superintendent.
You know, I realize that before the chief executive or chief financial officer and the town manager, and, you know, the town spends millions of dollars, we just were informed last meeting that the taxes are going up 12 percent. So when a taxpayer hears that sort of position that the town takes, and is disturbed that the taxes are going up, and hears that type of comment from you, Mr. Newhouse, it's hard to have a lot of respect for your position in taking that. And I don't think it's just to satisfy me. I think the other thousands of people in town that pay these taxes in town deserve to be satisfied themselves. With regard to bid documents, I think it should also be stated that Mr. Hall mentioned that there are contingency fees that are in question. And I think our town manager would do the taxpayers a service by getting thorough information so that when a question like this arises, he can answer it.
I'm going to interrupt you there, Mr. McDonald. I'm going to interrupt you there, Mr. McDonald. I gave you enough shrift there. Every time you profess to be speaking for all of the residents, I look in the audience and I see nobody there but you, and you're the only one that seems to have these specific concerns. So your concerns have been duly noted, and I'd ask you to move on, please.
I noticed, as I've been looking at the agenda, that there wasn't anything posted relative to any lawsuits against the town relative to the high school project.
Yeah, I'll update the general public and the board under new business.
And a question for Mr. Semaglia.
Why don't you direct your questions to me, and if they're appropriate, I'll refer them to somebody else.
I'd appreciate to ask the veterans' agents, since it's a veterans' matter. We've been told that veterans' benefits get financed from the federal government.
Wait a minute, it may be a legitimate question for the veterans' agent. I'll refer you to the veterans' agent. We're not going to take up time under public comments to satisfy whatever your... Whatever your goal is here, so... I'll refer you to the veterans' agent, if you could move on.
It's a simple question.
You're out of order, you're out of order, Ms. McDonald. Please move on, please move on to another question. I'm sure you're well prepared to answer it elsewhere, but not at this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it was a financial matter that involved the town distributing money.
It's not... Ms. McDonald?
I was only 75 percent of the federal finances.
You know what, Ms. McDonald, here's the thing.
That's all.
Here's the thing, I know you can answer it. Here's the thing, Mr. McDonald. Since assuming the position of the chairman since May, I've had to rule you out of order multiple times at multiple meetings. It's... Mr. McDonald, I've ruled you out of order now twice at this meeting. And I'm just going to be honest with you. If I have to rule you out of order again, a third time, fourth time, actually, if that happens again tonight, I'm not only going to move on with the rest of this meeting, I'm going to refuse to recognize you the next time that you request to be recognized under the public comments section. So you've been out of order three times, I'm still giving you the floor. What else did you have that's properly before this board?
Well, since there is a lawsuit against the town of Wilmington, I'd like to request that this board suspend any more activity as far as financial activity to develop this school until this issue is declared.
Do you have another issue you'd want to discuss?
I'm sorry?
Do you have another issue you'd want to discuss?
I didn't really think that was a laughable matter.
I think it's laughable that the... yes, I think it's laughable that the vast majority of people, overwhelming majority of residents who supported this initiative, who want us to move forward, and you are the face of the opposition of that, would sit here and ask us to take a position that thwarts the clear will of the people. I do find that position laughable. The results that it... that this opposition and these appeals, the consequences of those appeals, I don't find laughable. I find them to be a crying shame. But yes, for you to sit there in that seat and make that request, I do find that laughable. I'm going to update the board and the public about the high school project. As I indicated earlier in my comments, please move on.
Okay, well, all I was going to say is that I'm not the face...
No, 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 please move on, please move on, please move on.
Can I make a clarification?
No, I'd like you to move on, please.
Well, I'm not the face of the lawsuit, because the lawsuit doesn't involve me. You do want to stay there.
That's... You're out of order again. You're out of order for the fourth time. I've asked you to move on three times. Anybody else with public comments? New business and committee reports, I will start the ball rolling here. With respect to the high school project, as has been reported, the final decision of the Department of Environmental Protection, which issued the permit and upheld the project as had been conceived and brought through the process. In fact, an appeal was served upon the town toward the end of last week. The appeals date deadline was November 21st. We had been served toward the end of last week. Counsel has verified for us, and Mr. Hall spoke with him earlier today, that the complaint itself had in fact been filed and docketed with the Superior Court on November 16th. So with that, we just... I offer that by way of update to the board and the general public. We will have counsel give us a detailed analysis and evaluation. And I know that the board consistently, since the vote of the ballot at the ballot box and at town meeting, that the board has offered to be available at any time that it takes. And if we require any special meetings, we'll certainly reach out to the board. Counsel will be consulting with, you know, our consultants, our professionals, our administrative people, and counsel to DEP, which at this phase would be assigned to a representative from the Attorney General's Office to represent DEP. So we'll have an update, and we'll be keeping the board apprised as we go forward. Any other new business or committee reports?
I just wanted to acknowledge the Wilmington Coalition Group for the Substance Awareness Night that was held last month. Several of us attended that, as did the school committee members and just the general public. It was standing room only, and the Wilmington Public Health Department, as well as Wilmington Police and Wilmington Public Schools did a fine job in putting that together. The speakers were very impactful, the stories were quite riveting to hear, and I really was pleased with the community reception and involvement in the outside services that came in to take part in that. I will say Shelley Newhouse did an excellent job, as did Chief Begonis, and I know Joanne Benton also offered some public comments as well. It was certainly nice to see our police chief engaging so intimately with the public and really getting some real impactful information out there and offering to help. So I know those were just a few voices that spoke on behalf of the town. Also, I appreciate the fact that a memo was included on the Entel Farm Development Committee, and certainly I would encourage residents to participate in that survey. We certainly welcome and appreciate input and feedback from that survey, as well as any general comments at our public meetings. And finally, I just wanted to wish a very sincere happy holidays to the Wilmington residents and to the board. Certainly, if you celebrate Christmas, Hanukkah, or any other tradition that you might celebrate, I do want to wish you all a very happy holiday season. We won't see each other again, I believe, until after the first of the year. So I wanted to also state that I'm very pleased with how this board has come together as a cohesive group over the past 12 months. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you, and I hope that you enjoy the holidays with your family and friends. Thank you.
You too.
I agree with Judy about the substance awareness night. Excuse me, it was well-attended, and a very important evening. And as she said, Chief Begonis and Shelley Newhouse did an unbelievable job putting it all together, and it was a pretty passionate night. Mr. Chairman, not to protect you or defend you in any way, I just want to let the public know that sitting up here, getting town's business done, is an extremely important job that I take serious, just as everyone up here does. And for a gentleman to come to every meeting, and as we're talking and discussing town business, making faces, googly eyes, and laughing like a young child, is totally unacceptable to me. It's not the way a man acts, it's not the way anybody should act. It's so unprofessional, it almost makes me sick. So I just want the public to... I just want the public to know that everybody up here takes this job extremely important, regardless of what you don't see on TV from an unprofessional, immature man such as Mr. McDonald. And I just want that to know, because it may not be on TV all the time. And I too wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, just echo what Lou said. I mean, I'm sitting here and Kevin, meeting after meeting, you're just... Like right now, you're smiling smirk, and obviously your back's to the camera, and it's pretty insulting. I am taking things serious, I don't... Wouldn't run for slug, but I did take it serious.
Can you not suspend the financial open?
I'm not going to make too many comments on that, but I will say for the record, I just think it's a damn shame, and I'll say two words once again, time and money. As early as today, customer comes in the restaurant, customer comes in the restaurant and says, "What's going on?" I says, "Well, by the end of the day, and this is going to happen, it's going to cost the town probably more, millions of dollars to take care of this." But I'm just not going to say anything more. I think you've done a good job.
If you could, please withdraw from the meeting. You've been ruled out of order several times. Please withdraw from the meeting, I appreciate that.
I'm also Mr. Chairman, as you say, I think you've done a good job. And, you know, obviously, we would like to say a lot more relative to this than I know. Taking the words of wisdom from yourself and the manager, we will refrain from that, but I'll say two words again, time and money. And nobody wants to deal with that, even on a personal level, in your own budget, time and money. Thank you.
Could you move a couple of coffee costs for the school money? You know, just going to pay a couple of coffee costs when you raise taxes.
Mr. McDonald, you've been asked to withdraw from the meeting, please do so now. I just want to also wish people Merry Christmas. Yes, before we adjourn, just ask Mr. Hall to review the... Yes, before we adjourn, just ask Mr. Hall to review the important dates.
December 25th, the offices will be closed. January 1st, offices closed. Between January 2nd and the 11th, we have curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 6th, the Hunden Tavern has an open house from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. January 14th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting at 7:00.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?
Sure.
Sure.